I want to sign up for the same thing. We'll see.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 17th Salisbury City Council Work Session. We have a very brief agenda tonight, so let's get started with the post-National Folk Festival update. Caroline, good to see you. Good to see you, please. Okay. Take our way.
So, good afternoon, everybody. The more in-depth debriefing will happen. It's scheduled for October. We should have most of our information then. We're still waiting on getting reconciled with cash and merchandise and things like that, so some of those numbers are still coming in. So this is a very general overview with just some basic things. This is just a photo of the footprint. It's a very pretty picture of the downtown footprint before things went up. This festival and what it sort of champions itself on is helping to cities revitalize itself and to see itself in a new light, and we certainly were able to take advantage of that sort of pressure that the festival puts us under to make some permanent improvements. A lot of signage, taking more pride in ourselves, the wrap on the parking garage, which everybody loves. You know, we're doing, we've ordered those National Folk Festival banners for the new streetlights, and we'll also be doing some marathon banners and some other ones that we can swap out throughout the year. But we're really excited and getting really good feedback about most of, all of the signage. We had a great VIP reception. The governor came down, showed us all of his support with the proclamation, which was pretty cool. We had a great turnout for that. And then this is the iconic photo of the festival with Sammy, which was awesome. He was hiding in the background, and I said, "No, you have to come up here." This is the festival kickoff photo, which was an incredible thing to be a part of. The Tremé Brass Band was awesome. I hope they can come back next year. I don't know how many repeat folks we have, never.
They don't repeat during the, wow, I'm very amplified. They don't repeat in the first three years, but year four, we can bring them back, and we would love to have them because they were fantastic.
They were.
Yeah. And just a few more photos here. And you probably, I'm sure, have seen our official number, 63,000 folks, and the way we got to that number. And we didn't realize we were going to be able to use this technology, so Bill Garrett, our Information Systems Director, put up Wi-Fi throughout the footprint. And Monday morning, he emailed us and he said, "Hey, I didn't know we'd be able to do this," but we were able to sort of ping everybody's cellphone that was in the footprint for more than five minutes. And we had had the technology up for three weeks prior. We're able to, you know, take that baseline three weeks out, remove that, and then folks that had duplicative devices and things, and that's how we came to 63 unique devices in the footprint throughout the weekend, which is pretty incredible considering the weather.
Considering the weather.
But, you know, Saturday, it was packed.
Yeah. Yeah. It was good.
I think what that also demonstrates is people were very worried about large numbers of people coming in, and we obviously have the space for it. It never felt too, too crowded. And everyone comes at different times, so you don't have 63,000 coming at the exact same time, at the exact same space. This was a really amazing way to find out a number because we were looking at aerial photographs, which we still have, as well as sales numbers and things like that. But in the history of the festival, they've never used Wi-Fi. We had a dedicated Wi-Fi system for the festival, which is what allowed us to do this, and it's such an interesting idea because people don't have to sign on to the Wi-Fi. Their devices recognize that it's there within that footprint. And also being able to calculate it within a specific geofence and as well as a timeframe, only festival hours, was an incredible way to get a number very quickly, quicker than we thought. So that was fantastic. And again, it also shows that when we have larger crowds next year, we have the space, we'll be able to expand, and it still is a comfortable fit.
And then just a few more photos. They, yeah, they were awesome.
One of the things that I love, and this was in the family area, is that the entertainers, you know, especially at the beginning, maybe there's 20 or 30 people walking by, and they sit down, and they stop, and then they get maybe another 50 or 60 people. And then suddenly, you look around, and you have several hundred people circling around just having a great time. This was Dancing on Air Crew, and they did their performances in the rain, they did them in the sun. They were fantastic, and kids are still sort of talking about them, as well as the circus arts performers and the animal demonstrations. So it doesn't have to be under a tent, it doesn't have to be on a stage. This is just one of our roving performances that was really successful, especially with our younger audiences.
I was at the stage when it was raining, and we were trying to keep the floor dry.
That was crazy. They actually, yeah, they did this stunt in the tent with only five people because it's a tent, and they laid down towels to try and, try and, oh, that was nerve-wracking, but they had a great time, and everyone appreciated them still moving forward with the performance.
And if Ms. Christa Moon got this shot of our wonderful council?
I think that really demonstrates also what can be used from open spaces, especially if you work on them. So Field Ops took a lot of time regrading, sowing, and seeding, and clearing out the old times lot, the hill behind that, and it made a really great place to sit and enjoy a show. It's a natural amphitheater.
Natural theater.
Yeah. And it really was a fun place. You could dance at the base of the stage, there was enough space, and then behind that, you had a ton of room for food vendors, merchandise, and beverage sales and things like that.
I like the idea that PRMC gave the blankets. That was really nice gesture.
I know they were doing, they were doing water bottles. That's great that they brought out the blankets. So, yeah, there's lots of ways that we can partner with our sponsors, and they definitely saw an opportunity there, so that was really smart of them.
And then our other co-chairs, George and Purdue.
My wife thought that was me. We had the same outfits.
We were partnering up with Mariachi.
He was happy that I could say Mariachi earlier.
This was our marketplace, and even on Sunday when the weather was consistently rainy, they pulled down tent sides on the front, and it made a great place for people to go and shop. And there are some vendors that sold out of items. I know that Ed Wosny, who's a waterfowl decoy carver, sold several thousand dollars' worth of work.
In his shop.
Yeah. I mean, that place was packed every day, and it was a wonderful, I mean, just amazing artists from Maryland. Something that we really want to sort of scream from the rooftops next year is that these are Maryland artists, these are Delmarva artists, these are, these are locals, these are, you know, regional folks, and we wanted to really celebrate them some more, and just very thankful to the Purdue family for funding the festival marketplace as well.
And.
The kayak watch?
Yeah. And one of the other things NCTA tries to do when they develop the site, the footprints, to connect with the sort of areas that have been forgotten or haven't gotten much attention in the past. So you saw that with the PRMC lot, you saw Lot 30, people reconnecting with the river, which is really cool. And that bench, those people on the right, it's the, you just put those benches in, people are already sitting on them, so it's really great. And we did a lot of Riverwalk improvements and landscaping to get ready for this as well, so it was great seeing that all planted out.
I think something that people see is when they experience the festival or when they experience the downtown area this way, they start to see other possibilities and other ways that they can use it, other community events that should utilize it, and attracts more people, which is another, obviously, another thing that the festival does.
And then we obviously couldn't have done it without our police department and our fire department, and you saw the fire department on bikes this year, which was great, which is a new addition, so I know they're really excited about getting out in the community on bikes more. And then, so, and obviously, we couldn't have done it without city council, city staff, community. And tomorrow, we have our first city staff debriefing, just before, so we don't forget everything. We are doing a full debriefing with the NCTA in November after they get finished with the Richmond Festival in October. I know surveys are going out to volunteers, to artists, to team leaders.
You got yours today. Yeah, we also have, team leaders were met with over the weekend, one-on-one with the volunteer coordinators, talk about what they thought worked really well, what they'd like to see improve. So we're gathering all that data because they were on the ground, they were doing the thing, so they really have some amazing insight as to our volunteers, as do, you know, our crews and whatnot. And already, you have people coming up saying, "I've got this idea for this," and we can, you know, and they're all very, they're valid in their things, and that's how we improve every year, is we get that input.
Well, firstly, publicly, I'd like to thank you and your state, and your team. Did an amazing job. The first, from the first night, actually, from Wednesday night, when we were at the civic center, and you, I stood up, and I was sitting in the front row, and I stood up and I looked back, and I wasn't paying attention as people were coming in. And to look back and see the amount of people that showed up and volunteered for this, it sort of set the tone, I think, for the whole, I think it was a great idea.
It was, it was quite emotional to see that many people.
Yeah, it was.
It was also wonderful because you see an entire community standing up and saying, "I'm here for my community, I'm here for everyone. I'm stepping up." And they definitely did. We couldn't have done it without the volunteers. And part of our survey is also, "Are you coming back?" So we'll see what our retention is. I already have team leaders that are like, "Sign me up now." I have sponsors that are saying, "Sign me up now." I had one person said, "I want to do more next year." I said, "Well, you did a lot this year. I want to do more. Tell me what I can do," because they can see what the potential for this. So I'm very pleased with it. Always, we can always improve, always grow, and we will.
Great. I'm coming back as long as I can drive the big bus.
Yeah, leave us in the rain.
In the rain, yeah, yeah. No rain next year.
No rain.
Thank you very much for the debriefing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Next up, we have the SAFER grant, chief and deputy. You okay?
I'm fine.
Oh, yeah. I got it. Let's see here.
Good afternoon. Like I said, thank you for this opportunity to sit with you and talk about our SAFER award that we have been a recipient of. We just handed out some supplemental information that we can talk about in a few minutes, but I'm sure by now you were aware that we were approved to submit an application for the staffing for adequate resources through SAFER and all that. We were notified that we have been selected as recipient for $1.5 million in salaries and benefits for 12 firefighting positions. Now, it does come at a cost. The grant itself is for a three-year period, and what that grant will cover is 75% of the salary and benefits year one and two, and then 35% of the salaries and benefits in year three. It covers all the expenses of retirement, healthcare, and all that stuff that comes at the cost of employing a firefighter. There are some requirements, though, that accepting the grant requires us to retain the positions for the full three years. There is no obligation at the end to retain 12 positions. So we have had some discussions on that. The information that we have presented to you is some of our statistical information. The first, of course, is just the nice letter from Senator Van Holen congratulating us on it. The second sheet of information is the financial look of what the impact is, both from the federal government and from the match of the city. Keith Corddry has helped us put this together and verify the numbers, so you can see what year one, year two, and year three is in regards to the federal share and the call share of the city. The next page is in our document, is a little bit of background of how we came about with the 12 positions that we applied for in the SAFER grants. Back in budget process, when we were in FY18, the fire department put together a staffing plan to move the department forward over a four-year period. In FY17, there was a mid-year budget amendment done that allowed us to hire four firefighters, so that took care of year one of the staffing plan. Next, our FY19 budget, unfortunately, we were not funded any of the positions, and we, of course, went after the SAFER grant. But this plan takes us through the four years, taking us up to staffing our stations 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with each station being staffed with an engine and EMS unit, and four people on engines, two on EMS units. The next sheet is sort of the staffing plan, so you can see how there's four people on an engine, two trucks, our chief, and our medic units. Now, that is fully staffed, everyone on duty. That's what our staffing would look like. We would have three capital pieces staffed with four, and then our three medic units staffed with two. Each station would be open. We would open Station Two back up 24 hours a day with staffing at that station of both a fire unit and a EMS unit. The next information that's provided is sort of our statistical information, how our department looks and why we're looking for this increased staffing. So when you look at the second page on there, you can see how our call volume over the years has continued to increase. We're a department that is running over 13,000 calls of service with about 3,500 fire calls and almost 10,000 EMS calls every year. So you can see the drastic increase in our EMS call volume. The next chart breaks it down into day of the week, so when you look at those numbers, you can really see there is no non-busy day. Every day within the city, our units are very busy covering the calls. You can see the time of day, so even at 4:00 in the morning, we're running over 150 calls a year at 4:00 a.m. in the morning, where it peaks in the afternoon. We're at almost 900 calls throughout the year at that timeframe. Our travel time, NFPA standards talks about 90 percentile. We want to be at 90 percentile within four minutes of receiving the call. You go en route, four minutes, and we're just not achieving that. Station locations, equipment, staff plays into that, traffic plays into that, but at best, we're a 60% fire department at this moment, being able to get to the call in a timely manner. Room of origin, we can contain it as long as it's prompt notification, early arrival, we can contain it to the room of origin, but it's graph five that is really the most concerning, which is just our ability to assemble enough people on a scene to start effective firefighting operations. Right now, we're getting two capital pieces on the scene with three people.
Three, three full-timers and whatever volleys you can.
Then the additional information in there is, this is our SAFER in 2012 where we were awarded, so you can see the improvements that we saw, all from getting units on the scene in a timely manner, to our response times all decreased. We saw a significant decrease in our injury reports and our sick leave because we had adequate staffing to carry the burden of the workload across all units that were being staffed. And then the last information is just our current performance, where we're at with assemblage time, room of origins, travel, and our EMS, getting ALS on the scene.
Chief, do you know approximately, you probably know actually, but do you know approximately what percentage of time the EMS are in the barn versus on the road?
They're running.
It's got to be.
They're running an average of 30 calls a day with an average committed time of 45 minutes. An average call. Yes.
I mean, you know, this is something, you know, we've talked about this, and, you know, they're, I mean, it's, this is one of our core services we provide to our city, and, you know, because it's not just the 30,000 people that live in the city of Salisbury, it's.
It's the 100,000 that come in during the day.
Some thousand that work and shop, and, you know, and I, you know, I work at the North End, and I can tell, you know, sometimes when we, when we call, I mean, we've, you know, we understand that there's traffic and everything, and sometimes we've seen it take an ambulance 20, 25 minutes just to get up there to respond to a call. We had, one time, we had somebody actually die in our store. They revived him when he got there, but, but sometimes it's frustrating because you know what you got to go through to get there, and it's, you know, if you go out to the other side of town, you know, Harbor Point, and some of those other places that are, you know, now we go out to Warware, and, you know, that's a, you know, we've got, we've got to address this. And not just the fact that we were getting a grant and we're going to do it before years, but we have to commit to the long term to ensure that we, we can't let this slide back. I mean, this is a commitment. I mean, as long as I'm on the council, this is, this is a priority. It's just, it's just as important as having, you know, fully-staffed police department and fully-staffed fire department. I mean, you know, it's just one of our core services that we provide.
How are we positioned? Because you know from the day you start looking for somebody, there's a process that goes through by the time you go through training and all the rest of it. How many do we have ready to step up? Like, I assume there's some of the volunteers.
Yeah. So with that, our period of performance, so once the council accepts the award, from the minute we hit accept, we have 180-day period of recruitment, advertising, medical physicals, background, which puts our period of performance starting February 22nd of 2019, is the first day that we can start people in the employment. So with that, we hire people that are already trained. So there is a very small curve of training that we have to perform. It's the orientation to our department, so, but everyone comes into our department trained at the firefighter one level, has mat, and an EMT. So that means we can bring them in trained, they hit the ground running, they're on the streets, providing the service. When we look at our, we have some people that are currently part-time employees. We have three or four of our part-time employees that have already expressed interest and, if eligible, to go into the role of this SAFER-funded position. And then within our volunteer ranks, we have quite a few members that have also expressed their interest, going through the testing application process to try to be one of the 12 members that are hired through the SAFER grant. So what we know is that if we were to look at our part-time and then some of our volunteers being eligible, there's a reduction in the uniforms that we have to issue, turnout gear that we have to issue. So anything above that, we would be able to absorb in our current budget and our current allotment of uniforms and turnout gear, so.
Gotcha.
There is no cost associated with that.
April, any questions? Well, you know my, my position. I've been pushing for full, fully manned vehicles since I've been on here, because I've been on that other end of it. It's not fun when you're trying to do the job of four with three, or three and a half. So essentially, the first year, we're not going to really see, we're looking at next year, mid-year.
In reference to.
Getting, get somebody on and working.
February, yeah, the end of February.
February.
Yeah, that is when our performance period starts, which is the.
Next fiscal, I'm sorry, fiscal year, not calendar.
That is technically when our period of performance begins, which is the 36th month.
Gotcha.
If we are successful in being able to advertise, test, and get them through the process, then we have the option that we can contact FEMA to say, "We are ready to move that date up." It could be January 1st, but they said.
They're just still looking.
Yeah, they give you 180 days to complete the process.
Gotcha. Okay. You know, Mere said it best, our prime responsibility is safety, whether it be police and fire. We need to make sure that our people are protected. And the other, the other piece of it that a lot of people don't appreciate is the fact that our current firemen are going to be safer because they have a full, they have somebody looking over their shoulder and being there in case there's an issue, which is, which is critical. We have consensus to move this?
Can we?
We do have a request for a speaker on this topic, comments. Riley, you want to come up and, before we?
Well, first of all, let me say that do not take this personally. You do a fantastic job. The police do a fantastic job. But I'm a taxpayer, and it's fun, it's not fun, but it's hard to look at something as a line item rather than the entire picture, which is why I'm going to ask these questions. And congratulations on your grant. You said 1.5 million, it's really 2.5, isn't it, less than?
Yes.
Okay. So you get a 2.5 million grant, the federal share being 1.5 million, right? But you, the contingency is you have to come up with almost a million dollars, which is, will also need additions to, because in the third year, the funding goes down to 35%, so you have to make up the other 65%. You have to make up the other 25%. My, my main question is, is it in the 2018 budget of $6,270,822?
In the current fire department's budget?
No. Okay. So is this budget going to go, will it decrease that amount for '18 when you actually get the money, or will it increase it? Will it be this amount plus the billion dollars? In other words, where are you going to? In other words, where are you going to get the million dollars? Well, I'll tell you where you're going to get it, taxpayers. The other twenty-five percent and the other sixty-five percent is in addition to that million dollars over the three years. I'm just trying to...
No, sir, I don't think you quite understand.
And I don't, then. I hope, I hope I don't.
No, this, the, the budget, it will be an increase of twenty-five percent year one, twenty-five percent year two, and then the fifty-five percent, or sixty-five percent year three.
An in-...
An increase.
Of...
Okay.
Okay, let's see, we're, we're, what do you get for one point five million? And you're going to give me t- another million, what am I going to get?
You're going to get a station that is currently closed with fire units, staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, but I'm going to get twelve more firemen, right?
Yes.
How much of a total budget increase am I going to get over three years?
Nine hundred, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. A three-year period.
Okay, so tell me about, it, doesn't it pay seventy-five percent of the first two years, or what am I getting wrong on?
Yeah, so if year one, the federal government will contribute six hundred and nineteen thousand, the city will have to pay two hundred and six thousand.
Okay, which is what? What percent?
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, Riley, um, year four, so after year three, after this, uh, grant is awarded, um, there will be twelve firefighters, costs about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Seventy-five percent of that eight twenty-five is covered by the grant in year one, seventy-five is covered by year two. Year four, eight twenty-five will need to be made up if we're going to continue to retain those twelve firefighters. If that's what I think you're asking.
Uh, it is, but did you include the million dollars?
Um, the, the million dollars is what's...
Where's that going to come from, is the question?
So, uh, the first three years, that would have to come, uh, you said the taxpayers, that is not allocated funding right now. The, it's two oh six year one, two oh six year two, and five thirty-six year three.
Okay. Well, my point is with, I'm watching everything as a taxpayer, because when you, little bit of this, little bit of that, a lot of that, a lot of this, more of this, okay? It, it's just going to explode, and, uh, I just don't, I'm just trying to keep an eye on it.
Absolutely, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we do have consensus, so move this forward to the agenda. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Anything for the goodie order? Anything else coming up? Yes, please, I'll get them to them. If not, uh, we are adjourned.